All set?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Good evening. It is 6:30. We do have a quorum. We'll call the special work session of the City Council meeting to order, September 20th, 2021. It is 6:32. Public forum. Individuals may address the City Council about items on the agenda or not included on the agenda. Speakers are required to state their name and address for the council record and limit their remarks to three minutes or less. Speakers are requested to frame their comments around items that fall within the authority of the City Council. Generally, the City Council will not take official action on the items discussed at this time, but may place the item on file, take the matter under advisement, refer the matter to staff or a committee for a future report, or direct the matter to be placed on an upcoming agenda. Does anybody wish to speak? Go ahead, sir. Just to remind, up to the podium and just a reminder, state your name and address for the record. Need not be a resident of City of Little Falls.
So my name is Tom Briscoe. I live at 601 La Bell Place in Little Falls, and that's my wife, Josefine. So we moved here last November from Onemia. And we purchased, I'm not sure if there's an official name for the building, but we just call it the Howar Building. So most people probably know where that is. And we were kind of curious as to how the process works. If we submitted two recent permit applications to the city, which were taken up by the Heritage Preservation Commission, and one was approved, one was denied, and we were looking to appeal the denial. So we're just curious about how that process works and what next steps would be for us.
Sir, you could submit that matter in writing to the City Hall, to the City Administrator, and we will address that to the City Council.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Marrow, 611 Third Street Southeast. Being an advocate for the disability community and a mother of two amazing kiddos who have disabilities, I know firsthand that the challenges of daily living with a disability are not the hardest challenges. The hardest challenge in being part of the disability community is not the disability itself, but it is, in fact, the lack of support, understanding, and constant fight to maintain their rights to equal access in their daily living skills. Today, September 20th, 2021, you, the Little Falls City Council, will be holding a public hearing to adopt final assessment rule for property owners within the public improvement 389 area. When will the Little Falls City Council have public conversations that include the needs of the disability community that live in the public improvement 389 area? Will tonight be the night that the Little Falls City Council finally allows the disability community to actually be included in the city's process and procedures as it relates to removing infrastructure that provides equal access to those with disabilities in our community? Will tonight be the night that someone sitting before me is brave enough to admit that the disability community was not and has not been part of this Little Falls' process and procedure throughout this whole project? Tonight will not be that night because as citizens, we know that the City of Little Falls spends more time, more energy, and more money discussing privately how they can avoid a lawsuit or reduce the chances of being sued due to poor decisions, rather than admitting that they made an error or an oversight and being willing to work with citizens directly without having to involve lawyers. I'm confident no one in this room will admit that the disability community has been excluded from this conversation and/or ignored during this process. I'm also confident that current public records show solid proof that the City of Little Falls hasn't, in fact, excluded the disability community, their needs, and their rights to equal access throughout this entire project thus far. As a mama, I'm faced with so many daily challenges from communication struggles, never-ending potty training, limited food intake being the target of physical aggression, IEP meetings eloping refusal of medical treatments. The list goes on and on, but those are all challenges gifted to me by our Creator, who created my children perfectly unique, and He gives me the strength to make it through each day.
One minute remaining, Sarah.
The most difficult challenge and the one most frustrating is when neurotypical adults refuse to have civil adult conversations with an open mind and open heart to provide the necessary tools to those with disabilities to live a safe, healthy, and happy life in our community. You, the Little Falls City Council, are my children's biggest challenge right now, and as a family, we do not back down from challenges. So when will you have public conversations, including our disability community, as it relates to the public improvement 389 area? Will it be today? Or does the City of Little Falls prefer including additional voices into this conversation? Let us keep our sidewalks.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Discussion on the bills.
I had a couple of questions. There were a couple of things from the police department. And I know it was SWAT team training, but I'm just curious. I don't know what SWAT coins are.
So the sheriff purchased, it's a small coin. In the past, we've purchased these coins on behalf of the department, and I haven't purchased those in a few years. So this year, the sheriff purchased them on behalf of the SWAT team, and it's a small coin that's used, it's given out for different events to members of the community for different things. It's kind of an appreciation-type thing.
Oh, okay. Kind of like the military has.
Yes. Yes, very. Same thing.
And then I had another question, too. General operating HRA. Habitat assessments. Nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars. Could you explain what that is?
Sure. So there was some tax forfeit property that Habitat bought for construction of two homes. They're going to split the property up and build two Habitat homes. They had approached the HRA regarding, there were some outstanding assessments on that property or hookup fees. So they approached the Housing Redevelopment Authority to see if they would pay those assessments to help out Habitat. HRA has done that in the past, and they did agree to fund those assessments. They did that, I want to say it was about a year and a half, two years ago, but we didn't pay for them until they were ready to start construction on the property, which is, they're working on that now, getting that going.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions on the bills? Hearing none. Consent agenda item discussion.
Yes. Thank you, Council President. We do have Chelsea Robinson here from the Auditor's Office, and she's got, has some information that she'd like to share on some new stuff. Just came out from the census on redistricting. Talk about that because it's, you know, deep into our conversation. I think every time we have, we think we know what we're supposed to do or what we can do, some of the stuff changes, and I know it impacts what's going on with the county. So I'm going to hand it over to her, and I realize I have something else I need to do.
I just want to clarify. So we're past the agenda items, and we're going into council information item A.
Oh, sorry.
Why? I didn't hear any questions on the agenda, so I think we're good to go. Thanks, Chelsea. The floor is yours.
Thank you, City Council members, Mayor. So I was asked today just to go over redistricting, and again, redistricting is the process of redrawing the boundary lines. For election districts, it's done in the United States after the completion of the decennial census. The purpose of redistricting is to ensure that the people of each district are equally represented. So I have shared a map, and John is pulling that up here. But one thing that I believe you have seen is the redistricting schedule. So just kind of to go in order, the redistricting schedule, right now, the census data is coming out. September 30th of this year is when the census data will be released and detail block population. January of next year is when the legislative session begins, and congressional and legislative plans need to be completed by February 15th. Next, after February 15th, March 29th of next year is when precinct and city redistricting deadlines are. So by March 29th of 2022 is when your plans for redistricting will have to be completed. After your plans are established, the county commissioners and other redistrictings have their deadline as of April 26th of next year. And then from April 26th, we have May 17th. That, May 17th opens for the state and county elections. So the time crunch is very, very tight. Looking at the map that we have up here, so this is information data from the Census Bureau, the United States Census Bureau. It is online. It is public information. But I sent this over because this shows your population for 2020 for Ward 1, 2, and 3. So again, the purpose of redistricting is to ensure that the people of each district are equally represented. And right now, if we're to click on Ward 1, right now, total population is 2,683. Ward 2 is 3,861, and Ward 3 is 2,596. So as the City Council, it is your responsibility to follow the guidelines of redistricting. I have sent over the redistricting manual. It's about 85, 90 pages of fun to read, but the way that I look at this is it's a mathematical puzzle that elected officials need to look at and then draw the boundary lines. And of course, you have to have your lines compact and contiguous. You can't have arms off one way or another when you're looking at redetermining boundary lines. Any questions at all?
So one of the ways that we can, we'll be able to go about doing this is when that, as Chelsea said, the data is released, we'll be able to drill this down into block groups. And those block groups will give us a lot tighter, compact numbers in terms of populations within our city. So we'll be able to kind of give you an assessment of if we drew the line here, how many more people, how many people is that to ultimately, you know, find a way to balance the over, lot more people in current Ward 2 with Wards 1 and 3. So either that's Ward 1 comes up, Ward 3 moves east, or however, that's going to be determined. But the goal, as Chelsea said, is to balance out the populations in a way that they, those districts are compact and contiguous. And as you said, you don't want just a little spindly arm going in there to grab a little bit of population just to make the numbers balance.
Correct. And I think, you know, going back in history, I think that a change maybe in population was due to annexation. Is that correct? Yeah. So the timeline is just a little crunched. I don't know if you have timelines for publications, but I do know that the county can't move our end until the city has determined theirs by the deadline. So from March 29th to April 26th, that is the timeframe that the county can act on changes. And so within the county, we have five commissioner districts, and three of the five represent within the city. So it does make a difference and impact because we're looking at the overall county from the county commissioner's side.
Some of this is, so what you'll see here, it's like this data table. We have some, some of the numbers I know are in, but others are not. I think it actually, the area to the north is what's missing. So I was playing with this earlier today. But this is what we'll be able to do. I know the guys in engineering have done this in the past to be able to help us kind of draw some of those lines. They are all updated, but.
Are they?
Well, yeah, this is different from what I had earlier. I did not have the block group.
I did not have that either this morning when I looked at it last, so.
So cool. It might actually be, well, a couple of them were, and now it's gone.
It's in process.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Me.
Yes.
So drawing the lines, that's decided by the City Council and the county commissioners for the city and the council. Now, does the public have to vote on approving those lines? Or is it a done deal when we set it?
The City Council will create plans. You will be the ones who are determining where your lines, your boundary lines are. As far as who determines, I believe that is the City Council. You're going based upon plans. However, if you receive feedback or plans from the public, you may want to consider that. I would turn to legal advise for that within the city.
Okay. And then elections are in May?
Correct. Yeah, filings open May 17th.
So everybody on the council has to rerun in their new, new and improved ward?
Not necessarily. That is completely in your ball court as well. So you're, as City Council, you're drawing the boundary lines, and then you're going off of the redistricting guidelines within the manual. And if that is a determination that you are up for reelection when it's an election year, then you will have to determine the terms of that election.
So yeah, if the, if, as I understand it, if the lines, if the lines move and you haven't, then there are some procedures that would have to be followed in order to reestablish.
If you're, if the line moves over where you are.
Moves you out of your ward.
Moves you into a different ward.
Your existing jurisdiction.
I was reading that handout. It says in there, if you're in one ward, it's redistrict, and all of a sudden, you're living in another ward, you still can fulfill your term.
You can finish your term, yes.
Finish your term, but then it has to come up for election after that. Then you have to live in that ward.
Yep.
So you have to mover.
So if the, and then if the ward is open, essentially, then there would be, have to be filings for, to fill those open seats, too.
And if we would, you said there was a possibility of maybe adding a ward?
If that, you know, that's, that was what we were talking about at the last meeting, was there's two kind of routes we could go. One is to maintain three wards in the same council structure that we have. And if we did that, then that's by ordinance, and that's not the, you know, charter process, changing the charter process. It's not going through all of the motions on that end. That's really just an ordinance process that, you know, we have to follow the standards of our ordinance, which, you know, we introduce, we publish, and then we approve. As Chelsea said, we're in control of whether or not we have public input. It is good practice, as we read in the, in the redistricting manuals, to gain public input for, for that, and we certainly would have time if we are following the ordinance process. However, if we are going to change and balance out the population into four wards, which I believe would be part of what we would probably need to try to accomplish if we're going to balance, sustain the west side as, as its own ward, own jurisdiction without incorporating population from the east. But actually, after seeing the numbers today, that might overbalance the west side a little too much because they're pretty close to what the southeast is. You know, we're, it's going to, it's going to take time. And now that we have the ability to kind of drill these down a lot closer, I think we're going to be able to, to give a little better sense of if we balance out three wards, you know, how much of the east side needs to be pulled into the west.
This election, the actual election would take place?
In November of 2022.
November, just like it regularly.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah, even if the boundary lines are redetermined and they're, they're moved, everything stays as is until the election is done. We don't have to hold a special election for only a few months to modify that.
But if we, if we go to four wards, we would add two more council members, perhaps, and then we'd have to change our charter, right?
You would, you would change the whole structure. I mean, if you went to four wards, that doesn't necessarily mean you have to have two council members from each ward. You could have, for instance, you could have.
Right. For example, Brainerd is doing what you're about to talk to if I read it right, where they have some wards, like, we could go, we could have the same amount of council by going four wards and three at-large positions, which I've seen some other cities do. And I think it was Alexandria, they're all at-large, but then when I looked at their website, they identify representative for wards. It was really odd. So I mean, there's a, within charter cities, I mean, there's a lot of variety out there.
I think in the redistricting manual that the League put together, there are 70 cities in the state of Minnesota that have wards. Most are at-large. So it's, it's, we're kind of in the unique world by having the ward set up. That doesn't make it bad or better, it's just, it's different. Certainly, the dynamics of our city, having east side, west side, and the history that that has entailed certainly makes it, you know, serving from a ward has its advantages to serving in distinct.
Do you know what your wards were established?
They were here before the previous charter, as I understand.
I, to my knowledge, they're, they've always had wards. I know they went from five down, was it four or five down to three wards in 80, in the early 80s, and they reduced the number of council people at that time. I think they had 12, 10, 12, something. They had a lot more. So they reduced the number of council members, they reduced the number of wards.
Mr. President, but to me, the most expeditious and easiest way would be to figure out how can we balance out our three wards right now so we don't have to go through a lot of different changes, right? Now, are we looking at ideas right now, or are we just kind of getting the numbers to?
I think now that we can access the numbers, as, you know, with this, Chelsea just sent this over to me today, and like you said, they're looking at populating this during this week or even no later than the end of this month. We didn't have the ability to even drill down this far. I had, I had spreadsheets of every block, but there's literally thousands to look at, and without a map to put them on, it would be nearly impossible to say, okay, this is how many people we can reasonably anticipate are in this section of town. So, so this will, this will be able to tell us that. And I think at this point, it's, it's saying, if we do it, I think the commitment is to say, are we going to stick with three wards, two council members from each ward, an at-large person, and a mayor, which is what our charter says, and then modify the lines based on an ordinance? Or do we want to try at this time to make something different? And, you know, with the timeline that the state has, the requirements that we have, and our ability that we can't actually implement anything until the state's implemented, and then the county doesn't want to implement anything until we've implemented, it may only be really the most logical option, is just we do it by ordinance, maintain the existing makeup of the council, but we just move the line.
Well, I want to address that because you mentioned that, and Mr. Storey mentioned that, and I've been thinking about this a lot. We need to do what's right, not what's easy. Now, I'm not saying either one is right at this time. I think it's discussions we need to have. And mostly, that's going to come down to Ward 3 and, and the west side, you know, the gentlemen to my left are going to have to get with their constituents. The most would change for them than it would anybody else because on the east side, we're talking about pushing a line if we do that. So it, in my eyes, it's up to, doesn't make the most sense to keep Ward 3, everything standalone on the west side of the river. By my math, if we added another ward to the east side, we'd be pretty close on, on numbers, especially if you factor in Ward 2 and Ward 1 are probably growing faster than the west side. So even if they went out of balance for a little while, I think rapidly, they would be brought in line.
I don't know if Ward 2 is, or 1 is growing. West Side and Ward 1 are getting closer than they used to be. There used to be even a wider separation. The growth is really happening in, in Ward 2.
Well, we're talking about a, at some point, putting a 49-unit apartment building in Ward 1.
Mr. President, one point I would make is that we've got a half hour for budget discussion, so to do a real deep dive on this right now would be awful difficult because that would include all of us.
Well, I have a quick suggestion. That's what's my question. Are we taking ideas right now, or are we just looking at the numbers? I do have a suggestion that might balance it out fairly easily.
Well, and I'm sure we all have suggestions on what might balance it out.
I, Council President, and my, my ask would be, as we move on to the next item, is to consider that in taking input, and if Councilmember Storey has something, certainly, we can take that and discuss it, and then be able to allow staff to, you know, put together information on that and bring that forward to the next meeting. So, and if there's anything else, like, you're more than welcome to send, send things my way, send things to, to us in terms of ideas and questions that you want to look at so that we can have things prepared so we can further this conversation and dive a little deeper into it at the, at the next meeting or even a special meeting.
Okay. But we're at, we're at the point where, especially if we're going to get into a charter commission, we have to decide quickly what we're going to do. So my suggestion is we, we get something on the agenda to decide and vote which way we're going to go, one, one way or another.
More than that, we need some time to discuss with each other before it gets to where you're saying.
So is that going to necessitate a special meeting prior to the end of October?
That was my thought.
That makes sense.
Okay.
If I could just add two cents. If we zoom out of the map a little bit so we can see the three wards. So say, say you had the west side ward come over the river, and say, in the congressional and legislative plans, the district representatives are split by the city, which has happened in the past. So say you had, and I'm just giving an example because I asked the Secretary of State how this would work, so I'm sharing with you because I think you would want to know as well. So if you took the west side ward and if you drew a line over the river to balance that ward out, wherever it may be, and say that the districts for the congressional and legislative plans are split by the river, then you would, in that ward where it is, split with the west side. Within that ward, you would have two precincts, so two different polling places because you have different representatives. Does that make sense?
Congressional districts.
Correct. So I just want you to know. So right now, the city has three wards, and each ward has a precinct, which is your polling place. And so wards can have multiple precincts, so just keep that in mind as well.
Chelsea, does that happen at the county level, too? Or would you make a larger effort to try to balance the county jurisdictional lines with the city boundaries?
Say, so my understanding, just because this is new to me as well, and I'm learning as I go, is say, the district has nicked a corner of a city or a township, I would be on the phone petitioning the Secretary of State's office to move that line just a bit. Because if you're, you know, looking at representing a difference in a, in a city or township of four voters, you might want to move that line to equally represent and pick up within a city, township, or precinct, depending on where it's at, if that makes sense.
I was thinking more in terms of if, if, say, we change our boundaries in the county I was thinking more in terms of if, if, say, we change our boundaries and the county stayed the same, then, because I think Ward Two, Ward One, and Ward Three are all separate county commissioner jurisdictions, right?
Correct. So, what, if you stay within your three wards, the county commissioners follow those board lines. So, whichever, whatever you adopt is going to then impact the county commissioner districts. And then, of course, we're subject to different rules as well, so it all goes into consideration, and then, again, that short timeframe. So, and I believe at maybe one of your last sessions, you spoke about, you know, being at-large or representing by ward two. So, there is a difference in that, too, depending on, you know, how the council goes. Because right now, we're three wards representing the city. If you were at-large, you would all be representing the city. You wouldn't have your, your wards, and then, when it came to census time, you wouldn't be looking at redistricting, because it would be one whole city, if it was at-large. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
So, I say we call a special meeting to really dig into this a little deeper and move on to the budget.
Next Monday?
I'd have to look at my calendar, I don't think I have anything next Monday, but-
And then, and, and also, is there, you know, are we going to make time for public input on this issue? Do-
I, I'm open to it. I don't know how we do that. Do we just put it on the agenda?
Publicize it and market it to, you know, give us input, either, you know, at the meeting or in writing.
Right, unless we hear from people, we don't know if they strongly feel that they like the ward system, or would prefer it be at-large. I mean, if somebody's got an opinion, it'd be nice to hear.
Is one week enough time? Do we have to-
You know, and it's back to just giving us the sense and the direction we want to go. I, I get the feeling that it's still, it's very much, we're going to have some sort of wards, but, at least for this time, but it's, it's that question of, as you said, do we just move the line and go the easy way, or do we really look into what is the fairest way of dividing up the population as the census has given us?
Well, maybe, maybe that's the way to go, is come up with, at least be with us as a council, come up with a plan, and then an idea to incorporate that plan. This way, we got something to present to the community, and then they can offer their input on what we, on, on the direction we are recommending.
Six thirty, next Monday?
We'll get it posted.
So, no public input that night?
So, are we advertising for input just in general, or at, at the meeting, or are we just going to discuss the plan and then ask for input, I guess? It really just depends on-
I don't know what kind of attendance we're going to get.
Short notice.
I don't know that it would be harmful to have on the agenda, public-
Public welcome.
Public forum on, and we'll keep it to the topic at hand, on how we're going to-
That's a good idea. Have a public forum.
Because I'm sure that our commissioners are probably going to want to have some type input on that, I would think.
I think when you're looking at redistricting, you're looking at your responsibility as a council and equal representation. You really don't want to weigh into the politics. You really want to stick with the guidelines and the purpose of what redistricting is.
We take care of ourselves.
You do.
Of our community, yep.
Yes, yep.
That's our overall goal.
So, we're about our community.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chelsea.
Yep, Chelsea.
Budget discussion.
Okay.
Sorry to carve into your time here.
That's okay, I think we can, I'll, I just want to let you know, like, you had seen before, the, or it's sent separately, all the line item situation for, for the budget. If you also go into the, on the OpenGov side, I was reminded last time to go a lot slower through some of this stuff, so, and I know it's, it's probably daunting and confusing, because there's a lot of, a lot of things in a lot of places, but I will get this condensed into a single budget with all the various line items for us to, to look at. But, when we, when you go into OpenGov, you do have the luxury of seeing in here descriptions, and a lot of the details, finer details, on what's going into some of those costs that, that we put in from the department heads, Lori and myself. I do want to highlight Chief Shermers. He did an excellent job in his proposal, talking about the details for, for what they're working on from last year into, into this year, and then we're in, kind of drilling into the, a little bit farther into the numbers that make up those budgets. This did include, as well as, you know, as I talked about from the, from the, our special meeting, we were talking about positions. This does include an additional patrol person in the police department, and it does move one of the patrol officer's positions up to an investigator, which we're, at this time, only making an assumption that it's going to increase the grade. We don't have that finalized into what that job description says, and what the points make the determination for where that's going to end up, but it does go into, you know, what, it does account for that, that cost increase, for that, that raise with that position. Additionally, we do have a much lower grade position for administration that we included adding, that, so those are two, two-dollar amounts that impact the budget. Furthermore, we have our proposed renewal from Sourcewell for health insurance, which was an 8.2% increase, and we have talked, had a conversation with all the bargaining groups about how to split that, that amount, because based on our contract, any increase over 7% gets, we were going to bring it to the table to, to discuss and negotiate. I feel that based on the information we have in the renewal, the renewal range for our pool was between 6% and 12%, that it really did warrant this time to follow our past practice, and, and really splitting that to a whole dollar amount around an 80% for the city to assume that cost, and 20% to the, for the employees, so picking up the, the premium amounts. If you recall from our long history of this, we've, we've had kind of that same practice when we switched over from a much lower deductible plan with a higher out-of-pocket, but a much higher premium, into the high deductible plan with an HSA. We, we've also balanced that, because in, in, in the, or, in bargaining, city or employers cannot unilaterally change those, change those benefits, the aggregate value of the benefits, without negotiating that with the, with the bargaining groups, unless they're going to increase the level of benefits. If they're going to decrease, then they, then they have to be, be bargained. So, at that time, we weren't looking necessarily at decreasing the, the benefits, but we did find a way to balance it, and that included making contributions to the HSA. So, but, at that time, it was really prudent, because the projections for those lower deductible plans, and the one that we were offering, was much, the forecasting was, those were, those rates were going to go up much steeper than they would by moving to the higher deductible plans, and having the HSA benefits available. And HSA's healthcare savings accounts are, do stay with employees, they, they get to roll those dollars over year after year, and they can use them towards any health-related expenses, you know, the eligible health-related expenses. So, for us, I think we saw the, the vision to that, that this was going to be beneficial for, for us, and we did see, in our renewal packages in the past, they gave us both, the HSA, our current, the plan we switched to, and our past one, up until 2018, and at that point, we were kind of at the, the dollar amount where, where it made sense, and we were, we were actually breaking even. And then in 2019, I even asked Sourcewell, well, how can we figure out if we, if we've now are at the point where we're saving money as an employer? I think the employees are saving money because of the contributions that are made into the HSA, and the ability to roll those costs over year after year, and it was, it was pretty evident that that's where it would be. So, so I'd say, three years post 2019, we're going to be seeing, you know, we're in much better position related to that, and, and how that's saving money for both the city and for the employees. I did highlight in here some areas, just to try to get a sense for you, because I know when you're looking at large budgets and lots of line items, it can get daunting, and sometimes you can get lost in the numbers. I know that's the case for me. And I highlighted in, in the red, with the red text, the ones that went up, I think it was more than twenty, or more than 10%, the light red with the black text is between 5 and 10%, and the orange is, is a 5% increase areas, and, and just, just trying to highlight where, where each fund is, is increased. And I just want to touch on quickly, the Public Works Street. Those show the increase, but as you recall, what we typically do in the preliminary budget is we fund those departments 100% for their costs, and then Greg usually is in the plans in what we talk about in the next few months for projects that we're going to do over the next year. He will calculate out how much staff time is going to get allocated into those projects, and then we, we bill that out to the project, so we don't actually, we do that. So, at this point in the year, we fund it 100%, but then we reduce it. It's one of those tools that we can use to kind of ensure that we're, we're going to lower the preliminary levy, give us a little bit of buffer, in case something drastic happens between now and the final levy in December. So, that's why you see those pop up in the reds, but know that those numbers are going to come, come down pretty, pretty significantly. Next year is an election year, so that's why that one pops up in red. The auditing, accounting, that one goes up in red, because as we've talked about before, we have now the single audit, federal single audit requirements that we have. We have seen just an, an increase in our use on attorney, attorney costs, so we've, we're raising that budget, and then the police, that's encompassing a lot of what we're transitioning out of some of our capital requests. We had smaller capital items that were into the capital budget, which comes up in a different line item. Actually, it fills into this other at the bottom, and then moving those into just more of the annual operating budget, because we know we're going to have these expenses like tasers and, and other things that are just going to get replaced on a, on a more regular basis, in our much smaller dollar amounts. And then, in the, and finally, in the admin side, that, that increased cost really is aligned with, with the position, and a fully benefited position. So, I don't like to assume that if we're going to hire somebody, that they're going to take a single plan or a family plan, which we know have different costs to the city. We just assume, assume the highest amount based on the projected grade for that, that position. So, at this point, you know, it's certainly not finalized, it's something we can discuss in the, in the next stages of the budgeting process. As we, you know, you've heard me say this in the past, the preliminary budget's something that we want to make sure that we're setting, that we give ourselves some flexibility by setting it high, because once we've set this number, that's the maximum that the levy can be, we cannot increase it, but we certainly and absolutely will reduce the levy, depending on anything that, that comes up that's not right now in our, our anticipated forecast. So, that's just where I, I want to say that, you know, that's something that we've, we've looked at. On the library side, I think that one pops up, because we've had some requests for programming dollars.
You have an elevator.
An elevator, yeah, your elevator fix, that's right. That was, that was put into that line item. So, with the information that you, you'd seen in earlier, you know, back down, you know, so this is the next page down, I tried to break out what this number up here, this 1,800, 1.8 million dollar number, that's actually a estimation of these transfer, all of the transfers out. So, the equipment line, that one is up, because we really did hold off on a lot of improvements from the previous year. I sent you the capital improvement plan that's also in here, breaks down individually what, what is, is making up that total. So, those did come up, and, you know, with the police department moving to the body cams, that's, that's a, you know, pretty significant added expense on that front. Parks and Recreation, fully funding the, the contributions for the ban shell and the splash pad are, are a part of that, but otherwise, it's, it's really just a pretty normal, normal year budget on that front.
Excuse me, John?
Yeah.
Does that include the clubhouse at the golf course?
No, the clubhouse at the golf course is not going to be included in this budget information. That's going to be a capital fund, which we don't typically budget. So, like, the wastewater treatment plant, that's not an annual budget item, but that's a $20 million project. It's a, you know, it's a big thing. It's not some, but it's not something we're putting together in terms of this year for the budget, because otherwise, it's going to make our budgets look crazy, when one year we have $20 million worth of expenses thrown into the same operating budget. But, we will have that accounted for, that'll be talked about, and I do have some proposals that I'm, I'm waiting on receiving, so we'll talk about preliminary design and really getting into what, projecting what that cost might be. But, that'll be set up as a separate fund, just as we do our other capital improvement projects. And then, you know, as, you know, what Greg does, and for all the capital improvement projects, they start as project funds, then they move into debt service funds, and even those aren't included into this annual one so much, where you'll find that information really is, is what we have right here in this debt service number. So, that's the number of, that's based on the total annual general fund debt service obligations, so these are the loans, the bonds that we pay. So, those are all tallied up, and this is the amount that we need to collect on an annual basis to pay off all of those, those debt obligations from the general side. But, we also have assessments that we're going to talk about tonight in the assessment hearings. We also have fund, some of them are funded from other revenue sources, like in the utility funds, so, you know, not all of that has to come from property tax dollars. It's, it's kind of a breakdown of a little bit of everything. So, right now, we are projecting that to be 1.1 million. That really does fully fund a couple of things, and gets us into a really strong position for existing debt, but that's one of those that I would say, projecting this moving forward, it's something we really don't want to look at decreasing. We're kind of at the, the floor, I would say, for this, in terms of infrastructure that work that we have, in terms of capital projects that we potentially have coming up, and it's something that we don't want it to, you know, we don't want it to go up a lot, but we don't want it to really go any lower, because then we're going to see some of these roller coaster effects going to, going into our, our budgeting moving forward. It's really better if we can kind of stay the course, keep putting in 1.5 million dollars worth of infrastructure work, and then we will even have some potential, room for capacity within that plan, moving forward, to, to bring, bring in some other capital assets that, you know, potentially could be paid through, through bonds. And the way interest rates are, are today, and what they're projecting, it's, it really is something that, right now, is a good time for municipal side to be doing that work. And then, again, special revenue funds, these are, these are funds like our Housing Redevelopment Authority, EDA. They're, they're not coming, all coming from taxes necessarily, but they are, you know, pretty impactful from the tax, to, from and to the tax levies. HRA and EDA have their own levies and, and certain levy caps that they have, they're based on a certain percentage of our total market rate, so they have a total cap of what you could collect, you could set it as high as you want, but you're never going to get, if you, you know, set it at a million dollars, we're never going to get there, you're only going to collect what the, what the maximum is. The Parks and Rec is, as you see up here from the transfers out, mostly funded from the general fund, transferring that, that money into, into the Parks and Rec to operate. They do get a smaller amounts from, from other fees and services. And then the airport- And then the airport, too, funded very slightly from the from the general fund, just as a partnership in in the operating. We give $20,000 towards towards our operating budget, but most of that is between us and the county. And then the revenue that's generated from the fuel sales kind of make up the biggest components of it. Then we go into the enterprise funds. You'll see here some of the the numbers that are really moving around a lot. And the water side, we are looking at some major improvements there. We do have a pretty, pretty solid reserve balance in our equipment fund for the water, so we are going to look at what we can do with it. But as Greg presented before, it's stuff that we really should be looking at doing and it's going to have some very good long-term benefits for the operation of our of our system, especially the distribution of the water throughout the city to maintain that those that infrastructure. Then on the sewer side, that's actually stay pretty, is going to stay pretty stable. However, we are in the very last year of some of our PFA bonds from 15-plus years ago in some instances. And if we did fully fund those, we didn't, we didn't include that conversation with Lori, we did not include that into this into this budget year. But we do have equipment balance that likely we'll be able to to handle those final payments on the PFA. Then we will start to see our full PFA payment for the for the new project coming into effect in this in this year. We have started paying some of it based on what we we've drawn down, but now that the project is substantially complete, we'll see that that number rise for future years and we'll be able to accommodate that in future years. So so that number actually we'll see get a little bit better, I think, in or stay pretty close to this in future years. The risk there comes on now we have to figure out the total operating of the plant and making sure that we're meeting the permitting requirements in terms of reducing, you know, the pollutants or contaminants based on the the permit regulations. Number one being the phosphorus limit that we now have to enforce and and work on now that the plant's complete. So our hope is, talking to Matt, our wastewater superintendent, is that we'll be able to do that in a biologic process and not have to add chemical to to take that out because adding the chemical will be a significant expense to us. But we've already started to see our chemical numbers start to go down on the other side because we used to have to add chlorine for the disinfectant and the pro and and part of the process, and now we do the UV treatment. So as you've seen in in touring the plan, as you've heard from Brian when he came to to operate, you know, a lot of things are changing for what's going on down there. And we don't know exactly what that's going to end up to be in terms of total costs, but we're we feel pretty confident that we're going to be fairly balanced what it is. Some things went up, electrical, you know, with is going to be an increase, but other things are going to go down hopefully on the chemical side. But we're not going to know that for sure until, you know, we give us a full year kind of operating. The garbage and recycling does increase, but that's based on the what we're projecting, based on the RFPs with the with the recycling contract. And I am working on that with the attorney now to to kind of get to the next stage of negotiations with the Lemire's. Stormwater stays pretty close to or almost exactly to what it was in the year before. That's pretty, pretty easy, easy fund to operate at this time. We haven't had many for major capital and projects on that front. Golf, this one's very much up in the air, but we've been kind of assessing where this year is going. And I and I'm happy to say that we've had a very good September, and it's probably looking that we're going to be very close in in terms of where we we end up in in balancing this year for the operations expenses versus revenues. That said, I want to caveat, we have some very unique circumstances that are, we have no more full-time employees working for the golf course, and it's and it's strictly down to the seasonal seasonal workers. So as we look in the future, this isn't going to be very much an anomaly here in terms of our expense number for where we need to be. But having a lot of conversations with with Ethan and and Sherry on what the future is going to look like, and especially as we look to to renovate, you know, do major renovation and work on the clubhouse. All right, and then one more I want to touch on in this part. So proposed rates. So with the water, on the water side, with those major capital costs right now and some of the changes that we have or needs in operating, we are looking at at some pretty hefty raises to the to the base, you know, on a percentage level. And I say hefty because, you know, at 70 cents, which, you know, for the residential person isn't going to mean much, but as you go up in the multiplier effect, it does, it does start to to add up quite a bit. However, you know, if we remember back my first year here, 2015, we had some really significant things that we needed to do in the sewer fund, raising that, you know, $5 the first year and $5 another and another year on the base level per month. It was, you know, that's much more dramatic. But when you when you factor it in and you look at a residential customer, what they're going to pay for their for their water base, base charge and consumption, it really isn't going to be that significant. And even on a larger meter user, that's 25,000 gallons, it isn't, it isn't going to be that big of a change. Where we do see some other things, we are projecting to leave the the sewer as is. I think that's feeling pretty comfortable with that. Where we do see some changes is in the the garbage. There there was request for for that to increase for next year as well as the recycling and the need to to change the admin because based on the current projection for what we need to purchase the carts, we would need 50 cents more per month to to cover that cost. So if your standard user, 5,000 gallons, have a 64-gallon cart, you could likely see your bill go from about $100 to a month to $103 a month. And I'll kind of leave it at that for where we are, other than to say, with all of this projected expenses and increase for the positions and the capital requests, what we do see is a 15% total increase to the levy. Where that will end up in terms of the final tax rate is to be determined, but we're still actually projecting that pretty well based on very early numbers from the county that even at a 15% increase, our rate itself would only go up about 4% and still be below 70%. And and if you can recall from past years, when we started, we were in the upper 70s. And and since then, we've always, we've kind of had our rate going down quite a bit. So so last year, it really went down because we did hold off on a lot of, a lot of things to the to the budget. So I do believe that with the use, you know, proper, with some strategic uses of of reserve dollars for maybe some of those capital items and the moves with the projects that that Mr. Kimmon has, we'll get that number much lower. I would say, you know, give give me some flexibility in this is a three to six, three to 8% range, but ultimately, I think on the total levy increase, my target is is I believe, I think reasonably, we can find a way to get that down to to 5% with what, you know, what I think we can, we can project in those costs. And that does include sustaining those position requests as well.
Thank you. And it's 7:30 already. So we're going to skip the constituent messages from the work session and roll right into the regular city council meeting of September 20th, 21, 2021. We do have a quorum. Let's stand and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off all cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approval of the agenda. Approve the agenda as posted in accordance with open meeting law and herein place all agenda items on the table for discussion.
Council president, if I may. We do have our city attorney, Alyssa Harrington, on via Zoom. And after a conversation with her today, I think it's prudent that we have a closed session after the council meeting to discuss a legal matter.
Okay.
So Alyssa, if you'll be able to provide us with that definition that or the exact language, maybe you want to send that to council member Hanson and myself, and we can read that script as we close.
Just remind me at the end so I don't adjourn and we take off.
Because it's not going to be on the paper.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by council member Storely, second by council member Lundberg. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the minutes. Special work session meeting of September 7th, 2021, and the regular meeting of September 7th, 2021. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Conaffla, second by Mayor Zilka. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the bills. Checks 105469 through 105560 totaling $274,206.11.
I'll make the motion to approve the bills.
Second.
Motion by Gushick, second by Storely. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Awards, donation, presentations, and proclamations. Item A, golfers organized for Little Falls, accept. And the agenda says Tom Hogarth. It looks like they're well represented here, so if some or all of you.
Well, we got some members of the Little Falls Golf Course Extravaganza Committee and some board members for golfers organized for Little Falls. I'm Tom Hogarth. I'll have them introduce themselves. Paul Cameron.
Allison Lundine.
David Lundine.
Pat West.
Derek Colshaw.
And then Pat will present the checks to the city.
Okay. The first one is the first of five annual payments for the Walk Behind Greens Ariator for $3,600. And the second one is the fifth of five annual payments for equipment agreement for $7,000. And included is $500 payment to community services golf program, helping our kids stay on the greens.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, sir.
Good, thanks for all you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
For all you do.
Thank you. And I I just want to add that I attend the the Extravaganza Tournament Committee meetings when I can. Unfortunately, they have their meetings on Monday, too, but I have witnessed the hard work they do. And on tournament day, they have it down to a science. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Presentation, 2020 Annual Police Report, receive. Chief Shermer's.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, it's my pleasure to present to you the 2020 Annual Police Report. Okay, turn this wrong way. So in 2020, the Little Falls Police Department handled 8,266 calls. In 2019, we handled 8,337 calls. The crime rate in 2020 was 6,634. And in 2019, the rate was 7,060. So those numbers decreased slightly from 2019 to 2020, and I believe that's largely due to the COVID-19 pandemic. As I go through this, if anyone has any questions, feel free, especially when I get to the graphs later in the report. A little bit about the prescription pill take-back program. In 2020, we collected and destroyed approximately 998 pounds of prescription medications through the pill take-back program. We partner with the Morrison County Sheriff's Office and the Pierce Police Department in that program. In 2019, we collected approximately 520 pounds. So recently, this year, the Morrison County Sheriff's Office received a grant for Detera, which is a prescription pill destruction program or chemical. So you put your the pills in the in a little Detera pouch, and you add some water to it, and you can dispose your pills that way. So we've also been distributing that throughout the community, and I believe we have it at City Hall here if anyone's interested in that. Also, last week, we were able to install a 24-hour drop site at the police department so anyone can come into the breezeway and dispose of prescription medication 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and it's under surveillance, so, and secured. So we're pretty excited about that. So moving on, the narrative section of my report is designed to give the council and the community a better understanding of the different systems, technology, and programs that we have in place at the police department. Most of that narrative section of the report is unchanged, so I won't go over those specific pages. First of all, having said that, I would like to just talk about our mission and vision statement. And we developed this shortly after I became chief through, we met with members of the community, and and it was a process, and we talked about what's important to the community and and what's important to us at the police department and how we can better serve. So we decided, or through a collaborative effort, we came up with the following mission statement, and that is the Little Falls Police Department's mission is to promote and maintain a safe and peaceful community. And then the vision statement, we provide the highest degree of public safety by building relationships with the community through education, participation, partnerships, protection, and we serve with compassion, integrity, and professionalism. So we try to live by those standards and serve the community through those values every day, so.
Yes, you do.
Thank you. Any questions so far? Okay. So if we move on to page 20, I'll get into the main portion of the report. That would be 52 of the council packet, I believe. So if you look at page 20, you see the initial complaint reports by year, and that starts in 2003 and goes to 2020. And so 2020, we had 8,266 calls. I looked as of today, we handled 6,750 in as of this year. So that's where we're at today. And those just trend up as you look at the graph. The crime rate, 2020 was 6,634. That stayed, that's staying pretty consistent. We've had a, we had a spike in 2017, but that generally stays pretty consistent. Page 22, clearance rate. If you see in 2020, it's at 39. This is due to the switch to the NiBRS system, which we did last year. So so that's a 29 or 39% clearance rate. If you see in 2019, it was at 80%. Large discrepancy there, but the difference is, under 2019's number, we were looking at the SRS reporting system, which was a hierarchy of crimes. So it reported one crime for every incident. Now, when we report crimes, we can report up to 10 violations or 10 incidents in one incident. So we're capturing a lot more data. And as we move forward, you'll be able to go into the BCA's website and really nail down, even the community will be able to do that, really nail down what those numbers look like in our community. So it's going to be very helpful moving forward. Later on, there's a, I broke down by community, similar communities, and you'll be able to see how we relate to other communities under the new NiBRS system. Page 23, I have a graph. I saw, I tried to break down what our our call loads were related prior to COVID in 2020. So I went back, so the lines in blue, the graph in blue under medicals is 2018, red is 2019, green is 2020, and then the purple is as of the last day of June. So in medicals, you can see there were 487 as of the last day of June. And then last year, as a total, we handled 872. I looked at today's number, and as of today, we handled 696 medicals. Child protection cases, you can see that graph, last year was 904. We're currently at 475. Mental health in the community, last year, total 132 incidents, and as of today, we're at 96. Death investigations, last year, 21. We're currently at 16. Drug overdose cases, last year, we had four. This year, we're at 16. Part of that also, I worked with the Central Minnesota Medical Region, which is a group that works with us for our first response certifications and such things, and we were able to deploy Detera throughout the community, or through our officers. So every officer has two doses of Detera, or not Detera, Narcan, I'm sorry. So if they respond to an overdose, they have two doses that they have ready with them. So, and we have used those in several incidents. So it's very helpful. We not only deploy for the safety of the community, but we also deploy that for the safety of our staff if they would become exposed to a drug, narcotic. So drug violations, last year, 32 as of today, or, excuse me, 30 as of today, there are 32. Vote of cases, that's the Violent Offender Task Force that works with our area. We had to reach out to them, but as of today, there were 10 incidents that they have actively worked in the community. That's down a little bit. Last year, there were 36. HRO, harassment restraining order, orders for protection, and the DANCO is a court order, no contact order. Last year, there were 125. This year, 77. Criminal sexual conduct cases, last year, nine. As of today, there were eight. Page 24, trespass, incidents of trespass. In 2020, there were 52. As of today, there were 101. So that's up sharply. We had some unique incidents in the community with some mental health cases, and there were a lot of incidents of trespasses, especially in businesses that we had to deal with. So that would account for a large number of that increase. Scams, pretty consistent around that 75 mark. As of today, there were 53. 911 hang-up calls, 52 last year, 49 as of today. Counterfeit currency, 36, 2020, 10 as of today, this year. Mordester assists, those are down sharply. So there were 37 in 2020, and as of today, there were 16. Warning violations, last year, we issued 716. As of today, there were 742. Informational cases, if someone calls and they have a concern or information they want documented, last year, there were 378, and as of today, there were 355. Suspicious activity, 570 last year. As of today, there were 493. Assist to the Morrison County Sheriff's Office last year, a total of 245, and this year, we're at 201 so far. And vehicle lockouts, last year, we did 342, and as of today, there were 229. I also did a check on thefts and burglaries in the last 30 days, and as of today, going back 30 days, we've had 41 either break-ins, thefts, or burglaries within the community. So it's been a busy, very busy time, so. In closing, once again, I'd just like to thank our residents for the incredible support they provide us. We couldn't do our jobs without you, the council, and the city staff, so thank you. And I also want to thank my staff for a job well done. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Can I get a motion to accept the 2020 Annual Police Report?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Gushick, second by Lundberg. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda. Animal control report, August 2021, receive. Looks like we have a duplicate print on here. Mentions the animal control report again. Restaurant lodging sales tax, Schlener, Wenner &amp; Company, approve. Deferral of special assessment, 2021-A, public improvement, 389, approve. Economic Development Authority Minutes, September 2021, receive. Housing and redevelopment authority minutes, August 2021, receive. Police report, August 2021, receive. Wastewater report, August 2021, receive.
I'll move to receive and approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Storely, second by Canaffula. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Public hearings and lettings. Public hearing resolution 2021-73, adopt. Final assessment rule, public improvement, 389, adopt. Greg.
Good evening. Thank you. This evening, we've got, there we go, our public improvement hearing for Project 389. This is for Third Street Southeast, Oak Street, as well as Crestview Drive. This is also known as City Project 389. This is our final assessment hearing. So looking at the project location, we've seen this a couple of times before, we're looking at basically from First Avenue Southeast all the way down to Seventh Avenue along the stretch of Third Street. So when we looked at this in the feasibility study, the existing road has a Paser rating of two, which is poor condition. The water main was installed in the early 1900s, had six-inch cast iron water main installed. We had two water main breaks over the last five years, so we've started to see issues with the water main. Multiple broken curb stops where we weren't able to turn on or off the individual's water at those private locations. Sanitary sewer is both eight- and 10-inch vitrified clay pipe that was installed in 1913. As you'll see in a little bit here, it also had significant inflow from that area. The storm sewer was installed in the early 1900s. We don't have the exact date on that, but we do show the records that it was there when it was, when the sanitary was installed in 1913. So we know it's early 1900s when that was installed as well. Again, we've seen this before, the project need. This is a street view from Google. You can see all the cracks in the roadway, the potholes that are patched. Some have curb, some does not have curb, and so that was some of the things that we were looking at. When we look at the televising reports, we sent our camera down there to get video of that, just to see the condition of the sanitary sewer. We noticed a number of issues with the sanitary sewer in particular. Flat grade, you can kind of see the outline of the pipe. You'll see the half moon right here, that's the top of the pipe, and then where it cuts off, that is the flow line. So we're seeing a lot of pooling of the sewage. That's where a lot of the solids settle out, and that's where we start to see issues with backup with the sanitary sewer. Again, we have root intrusion. You can see after the right, where the roots are starting to come in. Again, another ball of roots. This, I believe, was from a service on this particular one. Again, another picture of the flat grade. You can see the water line right here, it's basically halfway, almost halfway up the camera, which is half of the flow of the pipe. Root intrusions on the joints itself, you can see over here, where the little hairs are starting to come in on that particular pipe. Root intrusion on the service line, where it's starting to get into the, into the service line. When you start getting the root intrusion, that's when it starts to trap, again, those solids, toilet paper, that type of stuff, which tend to lead to backups. In this stretch, we had a lot of inflow, as I mentioned. This is a picture where the water, you can see it's pretty clear, coming down into the sanitary sewer. More images of root intrusion, and then the image there of that, of that inflow. And then just behind it, you can see that root ball hanging over that entire pipe. So anything coming through there is going to get hung up on that, or was going to get hung up on that, on that root ball. More pictures of root intrusion. The one on the top left is probably the size of your thumb, so it's been there a while, and it's starting to cause issues with the pipe. The one on the right, you can see it's encompassed the entire pipe. They were able to get what's called the piercer. That's what we put on our jetter to get through it, but our regular head would not be able to get through that just because of the mass of roots that are in that stretch. As I mentioned before, this section had a lot of inflow in it. The blue line is our typical flows. We had a flow monitor on that stretch of pipe, and you can see it's bounced along pretty consistent until it gets to a point kind of in the middle where it spikes up. The blue is the flow in the sewer. The red is the rain that we occurred on June 29th of 2020, and you can see they correlate pretty well. The rain event was a 1.8 inch per hour rain event. Shortly thereafter, we started seeing a lot of flow coming down that, down that pipe. So we know that there was a lot of inflow in that particular pipe. So the construction improvements, we did install eight-inch sanitary sewer PVC pipe. The sanitary sewer services were stubbed out to the property line. We installed six-inch water main along that stretch. Water services were stubbed out to the property line. Storm sewer improvements, we included 32-foot urban section with curb and gutter. Between First and Second Avenue Southeast, we installed a 36-foot urban section. We included five inches of aggregate base and then three and a half inches of betuminous pavement. Along that stretch, we also included approximately 24 rock gardens. Those are yet to be installed, but they're going to be installed yet, probably within about a month here. The next segment that we're looking at is Oak Street. It's a two-block stretch just north and south of Park Avenue. This was a petition request due to a failing septic system. You'll notice that the Paser rating is a six, it's fair condition, and you'll see in the pictures, it's, the pavement itself is not in bad shape, but it did not have water, did not have sewer, and it did not have storm sewer in that stretch. Like I mentioned, this is the existing pavement that was there. You can see one crack here, but overall, the pavement was in decent shape. Again, we stubbed out eight-inch sanitary sewer, six-inch water main. Water and sewer services were stubbed out to the property line. We did include a 24-foot rural section, which means there's no curb and gutter, but we did include a swale on that stretch. Five inches of aggregate base and then three and a half inches of betuminous pavement. Last segment that we're looking at is Crestview Drive. Won't get into the area there, but yes, Crestview Drive. So again, this was a petition project due to a failing septic system. This one did have a Paser rating of one, which means the pavement has failed. No water main, no sewer, and no storm sewer in that stretch. So as you can see in this picture here, there's quite a few areas where it's potholed, that's been patched, it's cracked, and the pavement is essentially deteriorated to a point where it's not repairable in this. We did install eight-inch sanitary sewer, six-inch water main. The sewer and water services were stubbed out to the property line. 24-inch rural section with a swale, and then five inches of aggregate base and three and a half inches of betuminous pavement, similar to what we did up on Oak Street. Looking at the opinion of comparable costs, in our feasibility report, we had a total just over $3 million. We're at $3,107,000. Final cost came in at $3,097,312, so I think it was only like 3% over what our original estimate was, so fairly close to what we projected. Looking at the funding for the project, and you'll notice it's a little different than what we had at our meeting in August, but I'll go through it here. So the preliminary numbers were still at $3,107,000 for a total of the final, came in at $3,097,312. We did project that $990,262 were going to come from assessments. After reviewing that a little bit more in terms of which services already had replaced their service with PVC, the updated final assessment tally is $953,816 for that stretch. And so the city would be picking up the remainder of that at $2,143,496. When you look at the percentage split, it's very similar to what we were estimating. We were originally estimating 65% city and 35% being assessed, whereas right now, it's 66% city and 33% being assessed. Looking at the rates for our residential projects, this is very similar to what we had in the feasibility report and the preliminary assessment hearings. So the 32-foot urban-wide section was at $35 a foot. The side section is at $1750. Sanitary sewer is $32 a foot. The six-inch service line replacement was at $850 a piece. Four-inch service line is at $700 a piece. Water main is at $32 a foot. The one-inch water service replaced is at $1,200 a piece. A new one-inch water service is $1,900. Storm sewer for residential is at 19 cents per square foot of property. Rural section, front footage at $18 a foot. Side footage for a rural section is at $9 a foot. And one thing to note, after 150 feet of side footage, that does go back to the front rate on that as well. And a new four-inch service line is at $1,100 per service. So on City Project 389, we do, the city doesn't tend to sell general obligation bonds to pay for the projects. Property owners who are disabled, 65 years of age or older, and meet income guidelines may apply for deferment. We saw one of those this evening. As well as members of the National Guard or military service, or military reserve, who is ordered into military action per state statute. The rates that we're looking at, this is over a 15-year term, at our interest rate of 3%. The assessments are payable in annual installments, and there is no interest if the assessment is paid by October 31st of 2021. Now, individuals may pay all or a portion of the unpaid amount to the administrator at any point in time. Interest has accrued to December 31st. If you pay before October 31st, interest will be charged through December 31st of the succeeding year. So looking at the project history, we had our first preliminary public hearing on March 1st. We advertised in April of this year. We opened bids on April 13th. Construction was this summer. It's slated to be finished in the fall here, so probably in about another month, we'll be finally completed with it. The special assessments hearing are tonight, September 20th, and like I mentioned, the fall of 2020, we'll have construction complete. Any questions on the project?
The only question I have right now is, normally, I think when you open this up, you mention the publication.
Yes, we do have the affidavit of publication on hand as well, and the notices were sent out for that, yes. Thank you for that catch.
At this time, we will receive comments from the public. If you wish to speak, raise your hand or stand. The council president or chairperson will recognize you. Typically, individuals will be allowed up to two minutes and should be germane and concise, and further shall not exceed two times with a maximum of two appearances. In order that everyone can be heard, you must come to the microphone and first give your complete name and address. Your name and address are required for the meeting minutes. Would anybody wish to speak? Mr. Valentine, the floor is yours.
Greg, I'd just like to thank you and your whole staff, the whole city staff, for this project. I've lived there since 1993.
Before I hit the timer, can we get your name and address for the record, please?
Okay. Jerome Valentine, 205 Southeast Third Street.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to thank him. Looks a lot better. Just have a couple of quick questions. One is the width of the road. It was my understanding that the width of our block would stay the same, and the next block would become narrower. Well, our block is significantly narrower, and the next block beyond that is even much more narrow. And last week, we had the craft fair, and our block, and I'm not speaking only of the craft fair, but snow plowing in particular. I just really can't see how we're going to plow Third Street beyond the block I live on, and with the courthouse parking in front of our house, I think that's going to be, that's going to be a nightmare. So at some time, that's going to have to be addressed, because I drove down Third Street, I came back from work on Saturday morning and just wanted to drive up that street to our house, and I had to watch what I was doing, because it's pretty darn narrow. So I just wanted my feelings to be known on that. And the other thing, I just, this may, you might have a simple answer for this, but we're charged 60 feet of water main, all 60, for my 60-foot lot. Well, I own 60 feet. The guy across from me owns 60 feet. So we're both paying for the same pipe. Is that normally how that works? Or can you just explain that? I just, I'm not complaining, I just want an explanation.
That's usually how it works. So the city pays a portion, and the property owner pays a portion of it as well. So yes, it's both on that same portion of it, because the 32 doesn't cover the full cost of that water main, yes.
Okay. So again, I just wanted to... So again, I just wanted to thank you and make sure that I came up here to do that because it's a long-needed improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Anybody else wish to speak? And third and final call, anybody else wish to speak? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing at 8:02. May I have a motion on Resolution 2021-73?
I'll make a motion to adopt final assessment.
I'll second that.
Motion made to adopt by Councilmember Gushak, seconded by Mayor Zilka. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, I hope in future improvements like this, I hope we can take a look at what's there at that time. You know, we had a guy talk about the width. We've had individuals talk about sidewalks. I hope we can look at what's there, and when we do an improvement project like this, I hope we can replace and really think hard about putting it back at least in the shape it was, if not, make it better. So I hope we can do a better job on some of these other projects.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call of roll, please.
Canopla?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Have stain.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Storey?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Carries.
New business, change order number one, Beyond the Curb, 2021 Sidewalk Improvements, approve. Greg?
Thank you. In front of you, we have change order number one for Beyond the Curb. If you recall, we had them do some work for our sidewalk improvement project. Because this is more than what the contract amount was for that project, we are asking you to approve the change order number one to get us up to that dollar amount. For that, they did honor the unit prices on it, and so it's just a matter of doing more payment than what we initially thought on the project. And so this evening, we are asking you to approve change order number one to Beyond the Curb in the amount of $5,452.81.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve change order number one, Beyond the Curb, 2021 Sidewalk Improvements.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mayor Zilka, seconded by Councilmember Lundberg. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ordinance number 28, Seventh Series, amend city code, Chapter 2, employee response time in city code, Chapter 4, water service regulations.
Before you, tonight, you have ordinance number 28. As we discussed at the last meeting, this ordinance would remove the employee response time from the city code and would be addressed going forward through our policies. And last time, we did adopt a policy, at the last meeting, we did adopt the policy that included the updated response times for employees. This ordinance also includes a section on water meters where the city will continue to supply up to one-inch meters. Anything over one inch in size, the property owner will continue to purchase as they do now. But going forward, any repairs to those water meters will be covered by the city. As it's in our interest to get those repaired and fixed and maintained properly so that we can bill properly and we're getting correct consumptions.
Can I get a motion on ordinance number 28?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Canopla, seconded by Councilmember Storey. And ordinance, so we need to call a roll here, right?
Yes, that's correct. Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Storey?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Canopla?
Yes.
Carries.
New business, Resolution 2021-74, Preliminary 2022 Levy, adopt. John and Lori.
Thank you, Council President. As presented in the work session, we do have the resolution for the proposed levy. This encompasses what was discussed on all the general fund-related items. So that includes, you know, typically your police department, fire department, the administrative services, our engineering staff and street and public works, snow removal, library, council budget, you know, widespread amount of things. The capital improvement plan for those departments, as well as the transfers out for the parks and rec are kind of the major elements in that. This is a, total budget is around seven, let's see, I should pull up the other number. So total budget is actually 7.6 million for those services. The levy amount actually comes down to about 3.3 million because we do receive a significant portion of this through our local government aid, which is projected to slightly increase for 2022, as well as the fees and charges that we have to offset this. And the other major increase that we have in terms of revenue is on the enterprise fund. Last year, we really went through and reevaluated the formulas in which we calculate the transfers from the enterprise funds back into the general fund. Because as we've described it, there's administration, the central services that happen out of the city hall offices and the staff that work here, go to serve all of those departments. And if the water treatment plant were to operate independently, you know, buy their own meters, install their own meters, bill out those services, that would be a cost that they would incur, and it would be much more, it's much more efficient for us to centralize those services. So it is a cost that we bill out to them, and we try to base that based on the number of staff that are impacted by it and the overall budgets of those departments. So when we've incorporated the increases that we have, the things that are relevant to that cost, those costs in those other departments and enterprise funds do go up as well. But when they're spread out amongst the four various enterprise departments and other special revenue funds as well, the cost is, you know, it's mitigated substantially. So it's not a huge overall percentage increase to their budgets. So, you know, moving through this, excuse me, pull up the right one. It is something that we will, it is a very large increase, but as we've said and said in previous years, this is something that we do have means to decrease for our final levies, and this is really putting into most of the requests that were made when we're giving in that presentation earlier this year. We have fine-tuned some of these things down. So in some of the departments, we'll really see them stay pretty stable, but in others, as I mentioned in the work session, like in engineering and streets, as, you know, those departments look and project the projects that they're going to be doing in future years, it's something that we really want to, we have a means to lower that cost. So we will also be looking at utilizing potentially some reserve dollars that we have for capital improvements. We also have the ARPA funds for stimulus that we haven't yet allocated and decided what the final use of those funds will be. There may be eligible costs with those to offset this. So in the end, yes, it's a pretty substantial increase. It's going to be close to 15%, but we're going to have ways to drily drive that down very substantially. But as I've said, this is our opportunity to set the preliminary levy. We can, and we set the ceiling. We don't get to, we get to reestablish where it's ultimately going to be by the final levy. We don't get to increase it. So if something were to happen and we were to see a major increase in total cost between this date and December, when we do set the final levy, it gives us the flexibility to, you know, make those adjustments if needed. Are there any questions?
May I have a motion on Resolution 2021-74?
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Mayor Zilka, seconded by Councilmember Storey. Any discussion? Hearing none, call of roll, please.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Storey?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Canopla?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Carries.
New business, Item B, Resolution 2021-75, Preliminary 2022 Housing and Redevelopment Authority Lever. Levy. Lori, I tried to say levy and Lori at the same time.
So by state statute, we are permitted to levy a percentage of taxable market value for the Housing and Redevelopment Authority based on preliminary projections from the county. And by the percentage, we're anticipating that that levy, or the levy for 2022 would be $105,000. So Resolution 2021-75 would set the HRA levy at $105,000.
Can I get a motion?
I'll give a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Gushak, seconded by Councilmember Storey. Resolution, call a roll, please.
Hanson?
Yes.
Storey?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Canopla?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Carries.
New business, Item C, Resolution 2021-76, Preliminary 2022 Budget and Capital Improvement Plan. Lori and John.
Thank you, Council President. This is just the summation of the various funds that we have and the capital improvement plan that we've presented, and I'll pull that up as well, for items that we're projecting to purchase in the 2022 budget year for those various funds. Just as a quick aside, when you see this in general, as I just mentioned, the general fund and all the various things that that encompasses, special revenue encompasses the Housing Redevelopment Authority, the EDA, our Parks and Recreation Services, as well as the airport. And then the enterprise is the water, wastewater, garbage and recycling, stormwater, and golf course. So it is a combination of a lot of different entities, but we do, for budgeting purposes, need to reflect them separately.
Can I get a motion on Resolution 2021-76?
I'll move to adopt Resolution 2021-76.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Councilmember Storey, seconded by Councilmember Canopla. Any discussion? Resolution, call a roll, please.
Storey?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Canopla?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Carries.
New business, Item D, Truth and Taxation, Public Informational Meeting, December 6th, 2021, approve.
Yes, again, by state statute, we are required to have a public informational meeting to discuss our levy and budget. That meeting needs to be held between the end of November and the end of December. Staff is recommending that we set that meeting for our first council meeting in December, which is December 6th. That's 7:30 PM here in the council chambers.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Canopla, seconded by Councilmember Gushak. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. New business, Item E, Suspend Assessments, Public Improvement, 389 Crestview Drive and Oak Street, approve.
Thank you, Mr. President. As the title indicates, we are asking the council to suspend the assessments for 389 on Crestview Drive as well as Oak Street. In the past, where the individuals have had septic systems and wells already in place, for those that are not hooking up, we've asked you to suspend those until they do hook up to those utilities. So this evening, we're asking, again, the council to be consistent with that policy and, or I shouldn't say policy, but those actions to suspend the assessments on those until they hook up to those utilities.
So moved.
Second.
Please, can you let me ask? Motion made by Mayor Zilka, seconded by Councilmember Canopla. Any discussion? Yes, I actually have a question myself. I know this is standard for what we do, and I believe it's fair. Just wondering if in the future, we need to consider a time suspense on this, be it 20 years, 25 years. I have a concern that we're putting in all of the infrastructure, and believe me, I get it, if somebody has a perfectly operating well, why would you want to hook up? But what I wonder might happen is if there is a problem with the well and they simply repair that well rather than hooking up to the services that we paid to provide to them. Just food for thought in the future, discussion on, you know, we're spending a lot of money putting this infrastructure in, and we're waiting a long time to recoup any of the
Did anybody ask for it this time? I know that last time, there was a group of people that were...
In the public...
Both of them, and we got two more.
In the public hearing, they did, yes.
Okay.
During the public hearing, they didn't.
Okay.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. City Council Reports on City Authorities, Boards, Bureaus, Commissions, and Committees.
Council President, I want to say thank you for the opportunity to attend the Minnesota City and County Managers Association Conference last week in Duluth. It was an excellent session with a lot of very good speakers and information and opportunities to network and talk to my colleagues and address a lot of the very similar issues that we face in our city. So it was really insightful and actually have a couple of things that I'm going to bring back for conversation starters with some of our departments. Our, the last speaker in particular was the former Ramsey County Sheriff, who has done some really excellent work on policing and information on policing and how to engage the community around law enforcement, which I know is already happening. So I just want to, I think, lift that up and talk about how we're doing that in our community and making sure that the public is aware of how we're engaging with them, and then taking that as well into how do we continue our engagement process? Because as we've heard and discussed and realized, and coming out of the pandemic too, I believe it's really important that we work, do some extra due diligence and effort into engaging with the community. Lot of it was, there was a lot of conversations talked about how to move beyond just our standard protocol and practice of meeting people and having our evening meetings or council meetings and public hearings. And that is great, and it's a process that we need to continue, but it doesn't always meet people where they are and doesn't always get the input that we know is available in the community by the people that just can't make it to this meeting and on time. Especially with the big things that we have. I was at Community Development today and listing off the laundry list of big things that we got going on in the future, it's going to be even more important that we do that engagement work in the forefront to make sure that the community has the opportunity to be heard.
There was, we had a parks and rec meeting, and I think the take I got from it was, there's a discussion about Lions Park, possibility of us taking over it, some of the things we'll have to deal with. There's a large group of people came in for pickleball. Must have been about 20. And they would like to see pickleball courts because it's something all ages can do. It's kind of like mini tennis. They felt there's not enough room right now, too many people are standing around waiting to play, and they would like to see it. And it's a fastest, according to them, one of the fastest growing sports happening right now. So the discussion was about maybe possibility someday putting a court up just north of the tennis courts in Little Falls. There's a lot there that isn't used for a lot, city-owned. And there's the North End Playground that has an old tennis court that needs total reconditioning. And there's the North End Playground that has an old tennis court that needs total reconditioning, and pickleball would be less expensive. And that was brought up. And then some of the overgrowth in the parks and, you know, invasive trees or plants. And it used to be maintained, they looked real nice, you know, Maple Island. But everything's just getting a little crazy. And Greg mentioned, we had a gentleman that was willing to do that for not too much money in the past, but he has retired, so it's something we need to address. And that'll probably be coming before the council someday.
Mr. President, is that what you're talking about with the overgrowth and stuff like that, is that something we could request from the county with sentence to serve people to kind of help with that?
The challenge is knowing which ones are weeds and which ones are not. And so that's where, you know, you've got to know plants in order to pull the correct ones. So that's where I would tend not to necessarily lean on sentence to serve for that. If we were going to, you know, clear buckthorn or something where we could be there with them to do that, that's something we definitely could. But this one, it's a little more specialized in terms of which plants we want to keep and which ones we don't.
My thoughts were if there was maybe contact a Boy Scout group and someone's working for an eagle badge, they could be, go through a program where they understand the plants and that. This would be a good project.
Right.
So anyway.
Any other announcements?
Mr. President, just to expand on what John had mentioned, we'll be holding, the sheriff and I will be holding a community forum at the chamber on October 6th. We're calling it Coffee with a Cop, I believe it's at 8:30 in the morning. So anybody that would like to attend is more than welcome to do that and connect with us, so.
Will you have a doughnut?
I'll have one for me.
John, I sent you an email. I don't have the script, so, I mean, I'm not going to know the pursuant to statute number, but I can say at this time, we'll entertain a...
I will, here, I'll quick forward it to you. I did get it, so. You're probably not going to be able to read it on there, so. It should be in your email, and things do move pretty fast.
We will now close the meeting as permitted by Minnesota Statute Section 13 Delta dot zero five subdivision 3B under Attorney Client Privilege to discuss litigation related to nuisance properties. We will not take any official action during the closed session, nor will any other matters be discussed. After the closed meeting, we will come back into open session to adjourn only. I will now entertain a motion to close the meeting as permitted by Minnesota Statute Section 13D point zero five subdivision 3B under Attorney Client Privilege.
So moved.